So we'll go back to our training. You can read the minutes and I'll just talk. It's good. So last month, we talked about statute of limitations for an Article 78. So I'm just going to kind of quickly review what we talked about and then go over a couple cases that we didn't get a chance to talk about yet last, last month. So when you challenge a zoning board of appeals decision, you file what's called an Article 78 proceeding. This is under general city law, section 81(c). Any person or persons jointly or separately aggrieved by any decision of the Board of Appeals or any officer, department, board, or bureau of the city may apply to the Supreme Court for review by a proceedings under Article 78 of the Civil Practice Law and Rules, or the CPLR, as we often say. Such proceedings shall be instituted within 30 days after the filing of a decision of the Board in the office of the city clerk. Thirty days is referred to as the statute of limitations. That's the time period you have to file your Article 78 petition. And that 30 days starts once you file the decision with the city clerk. But as we talked about last month, there are a couple of exceptions to that general rule. So a zoning or planning board concludes its review of a land use application when it renders its final decision on the application. The decision may be in the form of a vote by board members taken at a public meeting or in a written decision approved by the board. Like we said last month, not every board does resolutions like we do. General City Law, section 81(a)(9) states that the requisite filing must take place within five business days after the day the decision is rendered. The law further requires that a copy of the decision be mailed to the applicant, but it does not specify a timeframe in which the mailing must occur. The filing of the written decision will start the running of the 30-day statute of limitations. Once you fail to commence a proceeding within that 30 days, your petition is, is dead. You can't bring it. There's no exceptions.
Can I? If a variance was granted, say, 30 or 40 years ago, under circumstances that eventually did not pay out, you know, they didn't, whatever it was granted for, closed or never actually used the variance and the business eventually went out, say. And then 40 years later, somebody comes back and since the variance was granted, there's no way, I'm sorry, there's no way to challenge something like that?
So that's a, that's a specific situation. So from your facts, you state that the variance was never acted upon. So our resolutions have an expiration. That's why applicants have to come back and get an extension if they haven't built what the variance was granted for.
Let's say they built it, but 10 years after the fact, the business went out and it was no longer being used for the purpose that was originally intended. And then 30 or 40 years after that, the variance still exists, but conditions have changed substantially in the surrounding area.
The variance runs with the land?
Right.
Once it's approved, once it's acted upon, meaning that the, you know, item is, say, the building is constructed with the side yard setback, it runs with the land. There's no, you know, filing an Article 78 to challenge it, you know, 10 years after it was granted.
If, obviously, things get rezoned, zoning laws change. Does a zoning law change? I don't even want to, I don't know if supersede is the right word, but if you are in a zone and you get a variance for that zone's conditions, you know, terms, and then they rezone that area, do you need a new variance at that point?
You do not need a new variance. Then you become a legal non-conforming, well, you're not even, you would be non-conforming with the new setbacks. If your building was destroyed more than 50%, then you might need to come back and get a new variance.
So you're only subject if you make a change.
Exactly. Only subject if you make a change.
Otherwise, you're legal non-conforming.
Mm-hmm. So they wouldn't, you know, even if zoning changes at a later date, they have that variance. They're, they're good in perpetuity, in theory. Say that very generally.
Use variance doesn't follow property, right?
Use variance...
Like if they switch owners or switch line of business or shut down for a while.
So the use variance would switch, would go with owners. It still goes with the land, but now it's specific to the use. So if the use is changing, that use variance is no longer going to be applicable. Like if you get a use variance to build residential in a business district and then you go and you change it to business, well, now you, you know, your use variance is useless.
If you were making a substantial change to the property, would that affect it then?
Only if you're impacting the setback. If you're increasing or enlarging the variance in any way, then you would need a new variance. So then we talked about some, some case law examples, specifically about, you know, in this case, was the statute, oh, going too fast, was the statute of limitations told? So these cases kind of represent examples to the general rule. So I'll just, just kind of run over what we learned last month briefly. So in this case, with the village of Great Neck, you know, this is about the village. We're citing to section 7-712(c)(1), which is the same as general city law, section 81(c)(1), which is obviously the applicable statute in our case. So that section does not require that the Board determinations indicate how each Board member voted. So when you are filing a decision, it doesn't have to indicate how the members are voting. In any event, it is undisputed that in accordance with the village law or the city law, such information was contained in the minutes of the Board meeting. So they had, the minutes are where you have to include the determination. So this, this case involved, you know, whether the statute of limitation was told because the decision failed to indicate how each of the Board members of the zoning board voted. And the answer was no, it did not, because the minutes included how each Board member voted, and they're required to include how each Board member voted. The decision is not. So arguing that the decision was invalid did not work in this case, and the statute of limitations was deemed to have passed. So in this case, it was, was the filing of the minute sufficient to begin the running of the statute of limitations? Remember, the phrase I had previously said was, you know, it's the filing of the determination. So general city law permits a person aggrieved by a zoning board of appeals to, to appeal a decision in an Article 78 proceeding, but requires the proceeding to be instituted within 30 days. So in this case, for Croton-on-the-Hudson, the appellant commenced the Article 78 proceeding 37 days after the minutes incorporating the respondent's decision were filed in the office of the village clerk. The Court of Appeals held that the filing of the minutes was sufficient to begin the running of the statute of limitations and that the appellant's claim is consequently time barred. The minutes were not approved by the Board until a subsequent meeting, did not affect the date of the filing. So as long as the meeting minutes reflected the decision of each Board member, that is what started the statute of limitations in this case. Like I said, not every board does, you know, formal resolutions or formal determinations. They just incorporate that, their decision into the minutes. So if that's what's filed first, that's what would start the clock. All right.
So in the city of Beacon, when we file the minutes, they're filed before we review them and approve that and comment on them?
No, we file the resolutions.
We file the resolutions?
And we file the resolutions first.
When our clock is in place.
Yes. So as soon as a meeting passes, so usually it's Tuesday, David has a routine of going to the office by Friday, and they'll get Friday, they'll get filed as soon as he files, so typically on Friday.
And then the applicant and/or the public, how do they get access to that filing?
So that's a great question, because we're, we are required to eventually mail it to the applicant, but there's no timeframe in which we have to do that by. It is the applicant or an interested neighbor. It's their responsibility to contact the city clerk's office to obtain the filed copy of the resolution or to contact the planning department, the, the planning and building department as well.
Got it.
So, you know, the best way would be to, to call or to, to submit a foil, you know, but your, the city has no responsibility to share that information to make sure that you, you get it. It's their responsibility to obtain it.
Thank you.
So, which is always good to keep in mind in case you're ever on the other side and you want the information.
Yep.
All right. So in this case, for the town of Tustin, the question was, was there enough information to start this, start the statute of limitations clock? So the zoning board of appeals granted a use variance to allow construction of a septic waste transfer station in a residential subdivision. In the case, the applicable minutes were not timestamped. In support of its motion to dismiss, the ZBA submitted various invoices and affidavits from parties with knowledge of the date of filing. So the third department held that the evidence provided sufficiently established the dates the minutes were filed, which were more than 30 days before the challenges by petitioners were initiated. For purposes of calculating the period for seeking review of these determinations, delivery of the minutes of the meetings to the town clerk is equivalent to filing the decision so as to trigger the 30-day appeal. So a mere delivery of the meeting minutes reflecting the Board's vote to the municipal clerk is equivalent to filing of the decision. So even though an applicant is unaware of the delivery of the minutes to the clerk, and even though no copy of the minutes is mailed to the applicant, it's still enough to start the statute of limitations. So it's, it's really a high threshold for an applicant, you know, to make sure they get the right information.
It seems like they give the Boards a lot of deference. Are there any examples the other way?
I'm just seeing if I have them. I seem to have leaned one way. There are, there are examples where the statute of limitations argument has not worked. I actually recently have had a case where we received a timestamped copy of a resolution and we argued that, you know, the clock started when that, when that document was stamped. The other side argued that there's actually a, there was actually another resolution that was filed, that was stamped afterwards, and the second stamped resolution was the final resolution. They get incorporated changes that had been discussed versus the other one had a couple blanks, it wasn't, wasn't signed. All it had was the, you know, stamped by, stamped by the clerk. And so we argue that it doesn't matter that it's not the final, it doesn't matter that it's not signed, it's, it's stamped, like the, the clock starts and they missed it. We lost, this was at Supreme Court at the base level, so this can go, we could see how this unfolds in the future if it continues, but at least at the Supreme Court level, they said, you know, that, that doesn't count. The applicant did their, due, we were the applicant, the other side did their due diligence to follow up with the clerk repeatedly, and the copy they were provided was the final copy, did have the stamp, so it was reasonable for them to act as that, as if that started the statute of limitations, and that we were wrong. It's only the first level, only Supreme Court, so we will go up, but we'll see what happens.
I would think it would be pretty interesting and very transparent for the applicant and for the public that if on each one of these, we were also able to quote them, when does their clock start ticking for this respective agenda item?
So it depends on the procedures of the municipality. You know, we have a procedure where we like to, and granted, it's not, the resolutions are not required to be signed, but we have a procedure where we sign them and then we file them. And that's why, you know, it's just...
So I'm talking specific for Beacon and for, for its process and regulations. I think it would be very beneficial if we were that transparent.
I think so. At the ZBA level, we do a pretty good job of consistently having everything filed by It's hard to always make that guarantee, though, that, you know, it'll, it will be filed by Friday, because some resolutions, we, you know, after we vote on them, they might take a little more time to clean up, it might take a little bit more time to be signed, and we do have that practice of always having them signed before we file them. But they do, it is said in the statute that you should file the decision within five days of the, of the meeting. If you don't do that, it doesn't necessarily, you know, mean the statute of limitations doesn't exist. It's more of a, you know, please follow this.
It's the best effort.
It's a best effort, exactly, which is what we try and, we try and stay close to that.
Got it.
All right. So this is where we stopped last time. So I'm, I'm going to take a little more ti, time and slow down to talk about these new questions that we didn't get to last time. So, in this case, on September 8th, 1999, the decision of the zoning board of appeals denying the petitioner's application for a variance was filed in the office of the town clerk of the town of Orange Town. On November 5th, 1999, petitioners filed a notice of petition and verified petition. Those are the documents you filed to initiate your Article 78. Petitioners opposed the town's motion to dismiss by alleging that the town failed to comply with the statutory notice requirement and that neither petitioners nor their attorney ever received notice of the decision. Moreover, petitioners also noted that they had conversations with a clerk inquiring that the status of the ZBA decision prior to its issuance. The clerk allegedly told petitioners that there was a delay with the stenographer and that once ready, the decision would be mailed out. Was the statute of limitations told because the town failed to mail the decision to petitioners within five days of it being rendered?
I think the answer to that is no, based on what we just talked about. It's a best effort, well, at least in the city of Beacon, it's a best effort of five days. And it's not the obligation of the city to make sure they get it.
Yeah. So the, the town law, just like city law, requires that a ZBA decision be mailed to the applicant within five days of it being rendered. There is no dispute that the 30-day statute of limitations is a rigorous one that can have a devastating effect upon a party who fails to comply with it. Yet the court has no authority whatsoever to extend a statute of limitations, no matter how compelling the reasons for the delay may be. You know, it doesn't matter if you got COVID or someone passed away or, you know, devastating things. There's nothing that can be done if you miss the statute of limitations. So nor can the court, on the facts before, bar the respondent from asserting that the statute, the statute of limitations offense, meaning that they can't stop the town from arguing statute of limitations. The petitioners at best have shown some delay between the hearing and when the decision was ultimately filed. The town cannot lie or trick someone requesting a decision or provide a misrepresentation. So you can't purposely keep someone from knowing the, the filing date. That, that would be wrong. So the court cites to language that appears in the practice commentaries, the, the author of the practice commentaries, his name is Terry Rice, he writes most of them. Is it all of them?
I don't know.
No? Anyway, his name comes up a lot. He writes that a proceeding must be commenced within 30 days after a decision is filed, and the statute contains no qualification or toll with respect to the mailing of a copy of a decision to an applicant, although it would seem to be unfair and inequitable for a Board to take advantage of the short statute of limitations when a copy of a decision has not been mailed to an applicant. As a result of the language of the, of the city code, of the city law, one should not depend upon the mailing of a copy of the decision and must conscientiously seek to ascertain the actual date of filing of a decision. I mean, we've, we mentioned that several times just tonight. So it's important that although a municipal clerk is mandated by law to mail a copy of a zoning or planning board decision to the applicant, the statutes that direct that a proceeding to challenge such decisions be commenced within 30 days after the decision is filed contain no toll if the clerk is delinquent in mailing the decision to the applicant or fails to mail the decision at all. So there's no real consequences. All right. In this case, petitioners commenced an Article 78 proceeding in 1995, challenging respondent's refusal to remove a condition placed upon the granting of an area variance to petitioners in 1993. In 1993, the zoning board of appeals approved a variance to allow petitioners to build a 24-foot by 30-foot garage on their property in the town of Bolston, despite setbacks of less than the minimum, minimum otherwise permitted in the town zoning law, on the condition that the structure be used only as a garage for storage and was not to be used for living or office quarters. No challenge to the conditions imposed were brought by petitioners in 1993. Everyone said thank you and walked away. The issuance was renewed by petitioners when they sought to have this restriction removed and sought permission to build a carport on the property. No action was taken by respondent on the request and the CPLR Article 78 proceeding followed. So just to summarize that a little better, the property owners went back to the ZBA years later and said, mm, can you guys remove this condition? We don't, we don't want it anymore. We want to, we want to change this up and build this carport. And the ZBA said, no, we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to rehear this. So were petitioners allowed to challenge the ZBA's refusal to remove, remove the condition placed on the area variance?
Were they allowed to challenge it?
Yeah. Could they file an Article 78 when the ZBA was just like, no, we're not, we're not going to put that on the agenda. We're not going to look at this.
I think you can file for anything you want.
Well, sure. You can do that.
Wouldn't they just...
Are they writing filing, is that what you're asking?
Wouldn't they just file for another variance instead of trying to...
They probably could have done that. In this case, they did not. They simply tried to amend the resolution and the ZBA just didn't make a decision. They didn't even hear it. You know, they're like, that's, that's your variance, that's it. They probably could have applied for a new variance. I don't know how that would have played out. But in this, in this case, and you're right, you could, you, you can do anything you want, whether you're going to go forward, I guess that's the question. So in this case, the zoning board, we all know that the zoning board of appeals is authorized to impose reasonable conditions as part of any variance approval. The Board of Appeals shall, in grant, and the language specifically states, "The Board of Appeals shall, in the granting of both use variances and area variances, have the authority to impose such reasonable conditions and restrictions as are directly related to and incidental to the proposed use of the property. Such conditions shall be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance or local law and shall be imposed for the purpose of minimizing any adverse impact such variance may have on the neighborhood or community." In this case, the court held that petitioners were in fact, in effect, objecting to the 1993 decision of the ZBA, the challenge to which has long ago expired. They were challenging the condition, in other words, and you couldn't do that. And the statute, the 30-day statute of limitations to challenge that specific condition expired back in 1993, and they were trying to bring this in 1995. The court concluded that petitioners present, present contention that response, that the ZBA had no right to impose a condition on use of the garage structure as a living office space was foreclosed on statute of limitations ground. So that's what they went in there arguing, was that the ZBA had no right to put this condition on our, on our variance. Well, that was your, if that's your issue, if that's your complaint, then you have to bring that within 30 days. So it's not just a matter of, you know, challenging a granting or denying. It's also a matter of challenging conditions, and that's part of this, the article, that would be part of the Article 78. Now, I think this is my last, I have one more case. Deputy Chair, can we go through it?
Sure.
Okay. This was the, the whole reason I went through a statute of limitations training was because I came across this case that I was super intrigued by. Now it's taken so long to get to, I think I'm less intrigued, but maybe we can, maybe we can pull it together. So in this case, this was recent, this is a COVID case about some pandemic rules that we'll, we'll talk about. You know, it deals with the issue of the pandemic and virtual meetings. So I was, that's what kind of sparked my interest. In this case, petitioner commenced an Article 78 proceeding, seeking a judgment annuling a determination of the village planning board, denying petitioner's application for site plan approval. So it's not even about the ZBA, but the issue's the same, dealing with virtual meetings. In this case, the village planning board moved to dismiss the petition. The planning board meeting of April 12th, 2021, was held virtually via Zoom. Petitioner's counsel contacted the office of the village clerk the next day by email and telephone, seeking formal notice of decision of the planning board's denial of the site plan application, and was advised that the village clerk was out of the office and would provide a written notice of the decision upon his return. The attorney continued to request a written decision by engaging in email exchanges on April 15th and April 16th with the village clerk, who consistently indicated that he did not have the written notice of decision. Eventually, the, the village clerk provided petitioner's counsel with a letter dated April 19th, which stated it was the official notification that the site plan application had been denied. The minutes of the planning board meeting were filed in the village clerk's office on May 10th, 2021, and petitioners commenced this proceeding on May 17th, 2021. So does the, the question that was ultimately presented was, does the filing of a Zoom recording of a planning board meeting commence the 30-day statute of limitations? And this is something that we do. We, we record, we recorded our Zoom meetings and you post them online and, you know, they're served, they're saved on, on our YouTube page. So in this case, respondent, which is the planning board, assert that the statute of limitations began to run immediately at the conclusion of the planning board's April 12th, 2021 meeting, when a recording of the meeting was conducted by Zoom teleconfer, when the Zoom meeting was saved to the cloud-based server. The petitioner asserts that an audio/video recording cannot constitute a decision of the planning board and that the Zoom recording was not filed in the office of the village clerk in accordance with the village law. Meetings are streamed, so in this case, the meetings were streamed on the village's YouTube page, where a record of the meeting remains publicly available after the meeting ends. Although minutes of the meeting were later prepared and filed in the village's office, respondent contend that the village recording of the planning board meeting constitutes the decision of the planning board because it contains the resolution and the votes of the planning board members, and further because it was filed in the village clerk's office as a village record upon conclusion of the meeting, when it was automatically stored in the cloud. Accordingly, respondent contend that this proceeding was commenced 35 days after the recording was saved. The petitioner further argued that the planning board would be a stop from raising the statute of limitations defense, noting that its counsel repeatedly contacted the village's, the village clerk's office in the immediate aftermath of the meeting to obtain formal evidence of the decision, specifically for the purpose of ascertaining the appropriate limitations period for commencing the Article 78. Yet was never advised by the village clerk that the respondent considered the digital recording to be the decision of the planning board. So we all know, I'm just going to summarize our rule one more time, last time. We all know that the proceeding brought pursuant to an Article 78 is challenge, to challenge the decision of, of a planning board or a zoning board regarding, in this case, the site plan, but in our case, variances, must be instituted within 30 days after the filing of a decision by such board in the office of the village clerk or the city clerk. No particular form of decision is mandated by statute. However, it's well settled that a decision must set forth the resolution of the board, any conditions imposed by the planning board, and the vote of each member of the planning board. Filing of meeting minutes, which must contain a record or summary of all matters formally voted upon and voted thereon, may start the running of the statute of limitations if the meetings, if the minutes incorporate the decision. if the meetings, if the minutes incorporate the decision. The respondents persuasively argued that the record recording of a planning board meeting conducted via video conferencing could satisfy the requirements of a decision of the planning board because it contains the resolution that was acted upon and records each member's vote. Respondents further assert that the statute does not specify that a decision must be in writing. That's true. Further, the Electronic Signatures and Records Act specifically authorizes government entities to produce, file and store records electronically, provided that certain statutory and regulatory requirements are met. It thus stands to reason that the video recording of the planning board, if properly filed with the appropriate officer, could constitute the decision of the planning board pursuant to village law. I mean, that was like, I was reading that. That's a lot. Like, we constantly record our me, our meetings. You know, this is adding another layer to this statute of limitations element. But the court added a however and said that the statute of limitations did not begin to run until the decision was filed with the village clerk. The planning board's contention that the planning board's decision was filed with the village clerk upon its automatic storage within the cloud management system provided to the village pursuant to its Zoom license was unpersuasive. Documents that are required to be filed are considered to have been filed when they are received by the office with which or by the official with whom they are to be filed. Upon filing, all local government records shall be kept in secure facilities maintained by the local government unless the consent of the commissioner of education is obtained to their transfer and storage elsewhere. Thus, to be properly filed, a record must be kept in a secure facility maintained by the local government or alternatively, may be stored in an off location such as the cloud, only with the permission of the commissioner of education. Although the recording of the April twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the planning board may have been accessible to the village clerk or the public, it was not considered filed with the village clerk. Notably, the village clerk did not provide any evidence demonstrating that the commissioner of education consented to the storage of such records by the village on the Zoom cloud management system or that Zoom, Zoom storage meets the criteria established by the commissioner of education for storage of local government records in facilities that are not owned or maintained by the local government. Accordingly, respondents failed to demonstrate that the video recording of the April twelfth, twenty twenty-one planning board was filed with the village clerk and therefore it cannot serve as the decision of the planning board. So ultimately, the Supreme Court in this case held that video recordings of the board meeting, of the board meeting constituted a decision as contemplated by the zoning statute governing site plan. Two, that the video recording could not serve as the decision of the board for the purpose of commencing the running of the thirty day statute of limitations. Three, that the board's assertion that thirty day statute of limitations began to run at the conclusion of its meeting presented an unusual factual situation supporting application of a stoppall against a government agency. And four, the board was a stop from asserting statute of limitations defense against the petitioner. They also added an argument that in this case, the, the planning board did not deny the petition, they did not deny that the petitioner's counsel made several attempts to obtain written notice of the planning board's decision from the village clerk immediately following the meeting, but was never advised that respondents considered the video recording already uploaded to the cloud to be the planning board's decision. It should have been apparent to respondents that the purpose of the persistent inquiries made by petitioner's counsel was to have a decision in hand for the basis of commencing an Article seventy-eight proceeding. And further, to ascertain when the statute of limitations would begin to run. Nonetheless, the, uh, now I'm forgetting if I'm in a village. The village, nonetheless, the village failed to advise petitioner's counsel of their novel legal position that they consider the recording of the April twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting to be the planning board's decision. Therefore, the village was a stopped from asserting a statute of limitations defense based upon the argument that the statute of limitations began to run right after the meeting. This is the only case where I've seen it actually a stoppall granted against the municipality. I thought this was really interesting and there's not a lot of cases yet that contemplate the impact of virtual meetings. Now after this, New York State changed the open meetings law so that your video recordings count as your minutes. Which is kind of another layer to this, but again, I don't think that would change the analysis in this case because it comes down to the filing. So if you are going to file your Zoom meetings in such a way that could start the statute of limitations, that's something to be aware of, but you'd have to get permission to do that or you'd have to stir, serve up, you'd have to save them in a municipal owned location. So I thought that was interesting. Hopefully that didn't put you guys to sleep too much. I'm sorry I went, I went over in my training session, but you know, I'm just fascinated by the impact of virtual, what virtual meetings had on open meeting procedures and are still having. So stay tuned. I think maybe the next training will be on, um, conditions, how we feel. Maybe a refresher on some valid conditions? I'm, I'm up for ideas though, you know, shoot, shoot me emails so we don't get any more statute of limitations ones, I guess.